All right, all right, everyone. Welcome to this evening's city council meeting of September 28th, 2021. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council in according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there was a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. So in attendance tonight, I'm going to start off from my upper left hand corner and move my way down. So we have myself, Councilor LeBlanc, we have Councilor Pat, Councilor Gilman, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Holmgren, Councilor Memhard, Councilor O'Hara, and Councilor Nolan. Councilor Cox is not with us tonight, but also in attendance. We have our City Clerk, John Cinos. We have our Fire Chief, Eric Smith. We have our CFO, John Dunn. We have our Assistant to the CAO, Chris Sicarenza, and we have our city auditor, Kenny Costa, with us this evening. All right. That being said, Madam Clerk, can we have the first order of business, please?
First order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. So under oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to just position obscene, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow any complaints as to individual performance. All right. So like I said at the beginning, if you would like to speak under oral communications, you can press star nine if you're calling it on a phone. And if you are watching on a device or computer, there is a request button to ask to ask to speak this evening. Anybody for oral communications this evening? All right, oral communications going once, twice. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. So under oral communications, I will hand it over to Councilor Nolan, our Chair of Ordnance Administration.
Hello, everybody. So first up, we have the Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council appoint Matt D. Giovanni to the Clean City Commission, fulfill an unexpired term to expire 2/14/22, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor O'Hara. I think we do have Matt on the call tonight. Matt, is this you? Can you hear me?
Hello.
Hello, Matt.
Speaking.
How are you?
I'm good. If I could figure out how to get this off.
That's okay. Just a couple of quick questions before you vote. Have you completed your ethics test?
I have.
All right. And have you been sworn in?
I have not.
Okay, so if you haven't been sworn in, that's no problem. You can go down to the city clerk's office and one of the clerks will swear you in. Okay, great. I just wanted to ask, because Matt, I mean, when we had Matt before us last week, he did not complete his ethics test. So that was just one question. And all right, any, any questions for Matt while we have him on the line? Nothing. All right. Just once again, Matt, we appreciate your service and your your volunteering for the, any board of commission. These are all volunteer and you make the city administration and the city councils job a lot easier, but you're volunteering. So if there's anything you need moving forward, definitely reach out to the administration, mayor's office, or any of the city councillors, and we'll be happy to guide you.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Council Memhard has roll call tonight. So Council Memhard.
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes, and Matt, make sure when you go down to get sworn in that you, they do tell you the secret handshake.
Great. I'll look forward to that.
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes, and Councilor McCarthy.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Once again, Matt, thank you. We appreciate your taking time, not only out of your busy life, to volunteer for this, but your time tonight to join us and get to be part of the city council meeting this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, pal. You don't have to stick around if you don't want to, but if you'd like to, feel free to. That's all.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Nolan, next order of business, please.
Next up, we have the Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council appoint Stephen H. Doe, fulfilling an unexpired term to the Magnolia Peer Advisory Committee, term to expire 2/14/22, and I definitely move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Steve, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
How are we doing tonight, buddy?
I'm good. I'm first time doing this.
Attaboy. And I'm sure you'll enjoy every minute of it. While we have Steve on the line, is there any questions for Steve? Are we from the councillors? Councilor Nolan?
I have more of a comment. Steve has been behind the Magnolia Pier forever. I mean, not only through its rebuilding, but just through its history, him and his family, Kathy. They've been wonderful contributors to the success of the Magnolia Pier, and I couldn't be more happy to have Steve on this committee. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Councilor Holmgren.
I agree with Councilor Nolan, just echoing that. Stephen, thank you for your service, and I'm really looking forward to what you do. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Councilor O'Hara?
Yeah, I just want to thank Steve. As you, as Councilor Nolan mentioned, Steve's been a part of the fixture of the Magnolia Pier since, since I was a child, and he'll continue that, I'm sure, for a very long time. So thanks, Steve, for your energy.
You're welcome.
Councilor Gilman.
Yeah, I can't think of a better volunteer for this role. I know Steve for over the years, and I think he'll do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? All right, I'll chime in at this point. I know Steve and Kathy very, very well. So it'd be a pleasure in listening to Council O'Hara, Council Holmgren, and Council Nolan, all Magnolia residents endorsing you. This is a slam dunk for me. Once again, Steve, if you need any assistance, definitely reach out to the mayor's office or any one of us on the council in the future, if you need any help moving forward, and we'll help you with whatever you need to be done.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilor Nolan. Councilor O'Hara has seconded it, so we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Memhard.
Yes, and Magnolia Pier says, thank you, yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you, Steve.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
With the secret handshake, yes, congratulations.
And don't forget the paddle, too. Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes, thank you so much, Steve.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes, thank you, Stephen.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Steve, thanks. We appreciate your time. And if you need anything, give us a call. And once again, you don't have to stick around if you don't want to.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right, at this time, I will ask any councillors if they would like to remove anything from the consent agenda. Councilor Pat.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we remove city council order number 2021-018 from Councilor Cox amending the parking and ask that it be referred to both A&amp;A, O&amp;A, and the Traffic Commission.
All right, is there anybody else? All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Oh, so moved, sorry.
All right, it's been moved by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Pat and O'Hara. All right, that being said, roll call, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as amended passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Do you have a unanimous consent calendar?
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the unanimous consent calendar.
So moved.
Again.
All right, moved by Councilor Gilman, Councilor O'Hara. All right, Council, roll call vote, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren. Jen, your, your vote, unanimous consent agenda. And she throws up a minute. Can you hear me, Jen? All right, and move on. Council.
Yes. Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on the unanimous consent calendar of roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, folks. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of September 23rd.
All right, at this point, I will hand it over to our Acting Chair of Budget and Finance, Council Memhard.
Good evening, everybody. We have a motion. I'll make a motion to accept unanimous consent agenda for Budget and Finance. Also, I'd like to make a statement of appreciation for Councilor Gilman for subbing in for Melissa and also Steve LeBlanc, our council president, for attending the meeting and making a contribution on a number of matters that were before. So motion made to accept the unanimous consent agenda of the Budget Committee.
Second.
All right, motion's been made to accept the unanimous consent for Budget and Finance, seconded by Council McCarthy. Any discussion?
I'd just like to highlight a few of the items that were just, you know, there's some substantial dollar amounts, but two of the items that were under consideration were either continued or will be at a public hearing at a subsequent date that relates to the Squam Rock Lane Betterment Paving and the Harbor Masters Request and Funding for a New Harbor Master Boat. But we're looking tonight at approving a $8,000 IT grant for improving our firewall, a Veterans Services Contribution of donations of totaling $239, and acceptance of FEMA grant for the Fire Department in the amount of $92,727. Any questions? You can follow us on the Zoom meeting recording.
Thank you, Scott. All right, any other discussion before we have a roll call vote? Joanne?
There was another CDVG grant acceptance.
Oh, we like, we like getting money like this. I'm sorry, thank you. And John Dunn, a very kindly stepped, stood in for Jill Cahill, representing the Community Development Department, and we did accept a CDVG allocation, the amount of $707,711, as well as a home allocation grant in the amount of 107,608. Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else before we vote? Seeing none, I will call for the roll. Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee Report of September 20th.
All right. So Sean, I know you weren't there that day. I don't have a problem with you reading the motion if you'd like to, or you can allow me to do it. It's up to you, bud. Oh, you're on mute.
I'll read it for you, brother.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ed, so I handed over to our Ordnance Administration Chair, Councilor Nolan.
The Ordnance Administration Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve a management audit of the Legal Department and the Human Resource Department pursuant to the City Charter Section 7-12 Management Audits, subsections A through D, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Any council of discussion? Councilor Gilman.
I just wanted to say that we brought this up during the budget, and we had a really good talk with the administration on this, and we figured out where it should fall. And so it was done in a collaborative manner. So I just wanted to mention that. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? So I just want to chime in on a little bit here. This was referred out by our Budget and Finance Committee, which has done an excellent job over the past, not only two years, but several years. So I'm going to support this this evening through their recommendation, but also just for the record, this isn't an audit of financial. This is a management audit, which goes a little bit deeper, looks at the working parts of the Human Resources Department and the Legal Department. So it's not a financial audit. So it's two different animals here. And I know Kenny goes through the financial audit, and he does an amazing job for everybody. And he's been our savior over, you know, the past 10, 11, 12 years, however long he's been here to make sure that financially, everything is accounted for. But this is a management audit. It's more of a, you know, you're a bodily, help things get run through the department. So with that being said, anything else? Council Holmgren?
I do have one question, just for the benefit of the public. If this was reviewed during the budget, and it was comprehensive, then why are we doing this for just two departments and not every department? And why aren't we waiting until the next budget?
I don't, I don't know who to refer to. Is anybody on the council would like to? Council McCarthy?
The initial request came in February. Several departments have already been done. The charter requires that all departments be done at least once every eight years. The part that was brought up at budget was funding. Some funding was put aside at the budget to do these audits. This is strictly, if you read the charter, this is strictly under the domain of the city council. We had previously been told in writing that it was the administration, which was incorrect. The committee made a recommendation, because it was all brought forward at the committee meeting last week, but there were some deficiencies in one of the departments to cover another department. That's why these two departments were highlighted for this session. And if you heard me at the committee meeting when we brought this forward, I'm hoping that the next city council continues on this path and follows the charter and reviews all the city departments in a, in a like fashion.
Thank you, John. Any other questions from Council Memhard? Did you like to chime in on this also?
I'd just like to follow up on John's comments. This is part of the budget process that this was highlighted and requested, and we're just following up on that now. And I appreciate Council McCarthy's digging into the city charter and clarifying some confusion about who, whether it's the mayor's office or the council that's responsible to instigate the request for these management reviews of these, of all our departments. But in this case, these two departments came to our attention because of concern about transfer of funds between them, which was, had not been previously brought forward to us or reviewed or approved.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else? Council of Discussion, Councilor Nolan?
I, I have no problem with either department. I believe they've done well for the city of Gloucester. I do read the charter. As Council McCarthy and Memhard said, it's a management audit that happens. The Police Department's been a few, DPW, it's just something that happens. I don't think that we're going to find anything wrong. I believe they're doing well, but it is our due duty to do our diligence and to follow through the charter rules and, and do these every few years.
Thank you, Sean. All right, anybody else before we vote? Seeing none, I will call for the roll. Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes, and Councilor McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, thank you, Councilor Nolan, for stepping up and reading the motion for us. And Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of September 22nd.
All right, I will hand it over to our Chair, Councilor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. So we at P and D reviewed the street closure for the Mag, Magtober Harvest Festival between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And we decided that because they were going to, they were asking for the Notch Brewery to be allowed to sell their four and a half ounces of their product in a roped-off beer garden at this event, that it was appropriate for us to bring it to full city council, because we would be part of the waving of the drinking and on a public street, the sale of alcohol on a public street, and waving the drinking in public ordinance. And that's why we're bringing this forward. So with your approval, I would like to, to make the motion that we made. And then I also have an amendment, and then, and then we can discuss it. And I'm grateful that Melissa Texer has taken the time off to, to attend, in case we have any questions, because she is on the licensing board. We appreciate that. So, so on a motion by Council Holmgren, seconded by Council Pat, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to permit a street closure on October 10th, 2021, for the Magtober Harvest Festival during the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which includes event setup and breakdown with the following conditions. Number one, Lexington Avenue is to be closed from Norman Avenue to Flume Road with appropriate signage posted at either end of Lexington Avenue advising motorists of alternative routes. Two, applicant is to notify all butters of the closed area of Lexington Ave. in advance of the event. Three, Lexington Avenue will be closed at 10:00 a.m. for event setup and reopen by 6:00 p.m. Four, a certificate of insurance naming the city of Gloucester as certificate holder is to be on file with the city clerk's office no later than October 1st, 2021. Five, applicant is responsible for providing adequate trash receptacles and for removal of same. Six, due to the current situation, all vendors, except those excluded by state law, are to obtain city vending permits from the office of the city clerk 10 days prior to the start of the event. Seven, approval is based on the status of the current situation and is subject to change based on any stay-at-home orders, public park, beach closure, closures, et cetera, is made by the state or the city, and I so move.
Second.
All right, a motion's been made by Councilor Gilman and seconded by Councilor Holmgren. Bill, I know you said you had an amendment. Why don't we go through discussions for us before we make any amendments? Do we have any council of questions? Councilor Pat and then Councilor Nolan?
Yeah, I don't know if this is going to be the subject of Chairperson Gilman's amendment or not, but I had requested that, since this was in the public realm that the, the applicants see about hiring a police detail, and even if it's not required by the, you know, by the licensing board, and I believe we've already had confirmation on that via email today, that that has already been done. But I just wanted to comment that that, in was, in my opinion, was an important thing to add on the public way, you know, to have a, a police detail present.
Thank you, Barry. Councilor Nolan?
A police detail was obtained for this event. That is true of the emails. It's an event that is going forward to support a building that we hold our public elections at, blood drives, community events, disaster relief, and not to mention just a grand old time for the community. Anything to do with the library is something that we should embrace as a city of Gloucester, not just as Magnolia. It serves a point for everybody, and I'll be supporting this.
All right, anybody else? All right, I'll chime in. Oh, I'm sorry, Jen, go ahead. Council Holmgren?
I, I said a lot at P and D. I agree with everything Counselor Nolan said. I'm very excited about this, and it's going to benefit the whole community. And I'm really looking forward to sitting in your car, Sean.
All right, anybody else before I chime in? All right, seeing none. So Melissa Texer is on, Prince is on the call with us this evening. We had a little conversation this afternoon that possibly the Magnolia Pub would like to seek a license to possibly have a beer garden also. I did reach out to Joanne and our city solicitor, Chip, basin about this. The, the brewery does, I mean, I'm sorry, the pub does have a license to sell a restaurant license, and, and also Magnolia 525 has a little seating area. So these will be, if they do have the license through the state to serve alcohol outside, which some of the downtown restaurants, like the 525, they'll be able to sell their lights, their liquor outside, but you'll not be able to leave the, as, as far as I'm, from what I understood from Chip, will not be able to leave the premises. The same thing with the beer garden is they will be in a roped-off area. They're not going to be able, allowed to be able to walk up and down Lexington Avenue with the beer. So I don't know, Melissa, can you hear me?
Here's her hand.
Yeah, I think you'd be able to. I think you can talk. No, I am not getting that. But there will no be out, there will not be alcohol allowed outside the premises of their footprint of their building. The Notch Brewing Company will have to go for their one-day license, and then I think, I don't know, Sean, maybe you'll be able to answer this. Does the pub have an outside seating area?
Can anyone hear me?
Oh, there we go. Yeah.
The pub does. Sorry about that. I think I was just promoted to a panelist. So when you, when I went mute before, I wasn't. So yes, how awesome is this event? Very much looking forward to it. Alana Horn does great things for Magnolia, and this is going to be another awesome event to support the library. So just to clarify a little bit, Steve, when you were talking about the Magnolia Pub in 525, just to be clear, the informal, and I say informal right now, request by the Magnolia Pub would be for them to be able to sell alcohol outside. Currently, under their license, they are not able to. As we know, 525 has an outdoor area under a tent-like area, and they also, through the COVID regulations, were able to extend their outdoor area in between the buildings on that, next to their property. So they have an area outside where they're, where they are licensed to sell alcohol. The pub, on the other hand, does not. They are only licensed within their area and inside. So if they were to come to us to request, it would be to have an extension of premise for one day to serve alcohol outside. So it wouldn't be that they are applying for a license. They are applying for an extension of their licensed premise. And I don't think the conversation has got that far yet between the Licensing Board Clerk and the Magnolia Pub, but I, I would guess that it's The Magnolia Pub, but I I would guess that it's going to evolve more tomorrow. But my concern is. If their request is to sell alcohol on the street as opposed to on their. Current property, which would be like their parking lot, then there may be an issue.
Well, that would be up to you when they come for you for an extension, correct?
It would be up to me if if the city council is allowing alcohol to be served on the streets. Because currently, right now, they're not.
So that was my amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
Which I haven't made.
Yeah, okay. So we'll get into the discussion with the amendment when you make it, but as of now. I just was making a point of clarification or giving some point of information. That there are probably a couple more people that'll step forward to sell alcohol outside. The five two five would be under their guidelines where they'd be able to on their premise, the five, the pub. Would have to reach out to the licensing board to extend their serving parameters. Okay, I just wanted to bring that forward to everybody so that way we're on the same page and when it comes comes before us. Councilor Pat?
Yeah, just a quick addition to for timing wise, I'm just, I would ask Counselor Gilman to consider. When she makes her amendment to include not only the current applicant, but. Other possible ones that might come before the licensing board. If we can possibly approve them this evening time wise, so they'd be able to do that if they're, if they get those approvals from the. You know, from the licensing board. That's just a just a process time wise that, you know, if we. Otherwise, I don't know how they would be able to get it done before the event.
So I think with that thought process, Counselors Gilman amendment should include. With other establishments being. Accepted their their application being accepted by the licensing board and the events committee. So I think that would be.
If she agrees, you know, in her amendment, that's just my suggestion. If she does.
Yeah, and I agree. I don't want to exclude anybody because they fell under they. They didn't make it in time, but I think that would be a cleaner amendment, whatever Council Gilman wants to do. If she adds the condition of other applicants moving forward with the with the acceptance of the. Licensing board and and the events committee. Then that would that would open it up to a couple more people who would want to move forward. Joanne?
Yes, so the Special Events Advisory Committee just approves the event at the location. Once the applicant checks off alcoholic beverages, it automatically kicks off to the licensing board and we do not get involved with that. So I know you want to make an amendment for the CAC, but that means they would have to come back on October seventh again.
I don't think we need.
I I really don't think it needs to go before special events because we just approved the location and the event.
Yep.
And like I said, the liquor license is under the, you know, any liquor is under the purview of the licensing board.
I just wanted to make sure that council had all its Ts crossed and I dot I's dotted. That's all.
And and as the special events was was aware when we approved it. That Brach, not was it Notch Brewery was going to be selling the alcohol there. So they are aware that there's going to be alcohol sales, whether it's one, you know, one establishment or one, it was one vendor at that time. So.
Melissa, are you going to have a special meeting for this or not a special for this, but you have an extra meeting coming up?
Yeah, so timing is everything, right? And this event is going to be held on the holiday, which I believe is the eleventh. And I'm going on vacation for a week in a couple days. So we do have a meeting scheduled for October seventh. Particularly for this Notch Brewery request. As far as the Magnolia Pub, I have concerns about the timing of them getting all in order before the seventh. But I think I do have a question to Joanne, just to clarify so that I don't have to track her down later. And hearing what you just said was my question. So are you saying that if by chance the Magnolia Pub comes before us. With a request to extend their license to sell alcohol in the streets. As opposed to on their property, they don't need to go through special events?
No.
It would have to be a, it would have to be a rope off area, Melissa, whatever be a beer garden area.
Yeah.
John, I'm sorry.
It was just, it's under the purview of the city council. Because any street closure, it goes to P and D and then after P and D recommends to full council. The special events doesn't deal with street closures. We just approve the event and then after. If they have to go through the full council, that's the chance they have to take whether they get approved or not.
Right.
Okay, so then I guess my takeaway is I just need to know that the council is aware, whether it's through an amendment of your motion or what have you. That there is a possibility that there could be more than one vendor. Selling alcohol on Lexington Ave for the event. That's all the, that's all I need to know for us to move forward.
Right, and and at your license, I'm not going to tell you how to run your licensing meeting, but they you should set up parameters. Same as the the notch, you know.
Oh, we do that and more, trust me.
Oh, I know, I know. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the main, more on the main motion? Council McCarthy.
Yeah, I've heard public way being brought up here. Once the street shut down. I I wouldn't consider it a public way anymore because the verbiage in the statute is. Accessible by light to a motor vehicle by licensee or invitee and I I just wouldn't consider it a public way after it shut down. Melissa, do you want to weigh in on that?
So I'm not going to put my legal hat on because the state prevents me from being a lawyer right now. While I'm, while I work at the district court, but I would just say. That that sounds reasonable, but I I don't want it to see it ended up in a court case just to find out the answer to that. So.
I mean, that's that's the way I would look at it. It is once it's shut down, that that it's not a public way anymore by the verbiage in the statute. That's all.
Yeah, that would be for a good defense attorney to argue.
So, John, it's not, it's not that I don't disagree with you, but I mean, if somebody's going to be selling alcohol. It should be limited to a certain area. If not, then it's just going to be a free for all. Everybody's going to bring their own and walk around and do whatever they're going to do and. At least right now, there's accountability of where.
I agree with that a hundred percent, Steve. You know, having and that's that comes under the jurisdiction of the licensing board that can require a, and we've done this a lot of different city. Areas that we require a beer garden or fenced in area and that comes under the licensees, the license board.
Yep. Melissa?
Just one last tidbit of information, I'm hearing and I'm reading because I was reading the minutes. From Val Gilman's P and O and A meeting, P and D meeting. P and D, sorry, I still don't get that straight. And just want to be clear, I mean, the area, the the barriers that you're you've considered for this event has been rope. The ABCC may say that rope is not enough. So to be clear and to John McCarthy's concern. Areas downtown that are on public ways or public access, they all have hard barriers. And the event for this night does not have that. So, I mean, I know there's a way to distinguish whether the public have access and things like that, but. Safety obviously is the number one concern and that will be the concern of the licensing board. So. There is a good chance that we may ask Notch Brewery to do more than a rope. And of course, consider whether the pub should be in the street or on their. Park and law area or a safer area. But those are the things for us to consider. So I just want you to know that we do a lot more inquiry. For the public safety piece under the guidelines of the ABCC. Guidelines that they give us for outdoor patios and outdoor areas for sale of alcohol.
Right, and we're up at stage four. We have a beer garden up there all the time with rope. So, Councilor Pat?
Yeah, just, just an offer. If it comes down to that and the requirement is more than rope. The Gloucester Fund has fifteen hundred feet of orange fence that we use for like fireworks and. Again, up at the concerts, up at State Fort, et cetera. And if any of these people, if that's what the licensing. Requests or requires. More than happy to make it available to all of them.
Awesome. Thank you, Barry. All right, any other councilor questions? Council Gilman?
I just want to recognize that Kylie Davis, who's one of the organizers, has her hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna see if we can suspend our rules to try to. We're still in council question part of this. Any other questions before we move forward on the main motion? And why don't we continue with this? We'll get to Kylie after we get an amendment and stuff like that. Let's get through our. Motion process first.
Okay, so so can I amend it now?
You certainly can.
Thank you. So I think I've got this right. So I. Like to amend our motion by adding condition eight. To include waiving the drinking public ordinance for the sale of alcohol in a public street only. For establishments accepted by the licensing board at their October seventh meeting. And I so move. Second.
All right, we have a motion by council, amendment by Council, Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Holmgren. Any other discussion? All right, and I think that's adequate. If if they don't get approved at the licensing board, then they're not allowed to sell anything. So that that's adequate to me. All right, and before we move forward, I'd like to suspend our rules. And Kylie Davis has her hand up. She'd like to speak. So without any, why don't we take a vote to suspend our rules? Council Memart?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Absolutely.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Councilor Pat?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
All right, we're going to suspend our rules and we're going to allow Kylie to talk. Kylie, can you hear me?
Yep, can you hear me?
We sure can. What would you like to chime in on?
I'm sorry. I didn't realize it would be a suspension of rules to allow me to speak. I'm sorry about that. I just wanted to clarify particularly for all of you and for the licensing board moving forward. There was never any plan to have there be an allowance for people to walk along the street. With open containers of alcohol. That's why the sort of beer garden area was very specific in where it was put at the end of the street. With the plan of the police detail to be on that end to just add another layer of control in that area. So I would hope and as one of the event organizers request. That if either of the other potential applicants being five two five or best friends Magnolia Pub. That they would not be allowed to request. Having open alcohol containers served by them and allowed on the street. It just could change the event tremendously into something that we we really don't want. And to keep the control consistent and safe. You know, I I think it's really important that it only be allowed in very specific cornered off, roped off or fenced off areas.
Okay, so just for clarification, five two five does have a area that they are allowed to sell alcohol outside. Just like any normal business day, they would not be allowed to take it off premises. So they would be. Policing themselves and the five two, I mean, the pub, if they were to apply for this. They would have a roped off area and they would have to have a police detail also.
Okay, great. That, thank you for clarifying that. This is the first time we've done this and I've been helping. Notch Brewery navigate the Gloucester system. So, you know, I just want it to be consistent and to keep safety as a number one priority.
Awesome. All right, awesome. Kylie, thank you. We appreciate everything you do and we're looking forward to this and. It's going to be an awesome event. Hopefully it's not the first one, let's go the last one. You know what I mean? All right, so we're back to. The amendment. Any other questions with the amendment? All right, seeing none, I will offer the roll call. Council Memart?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Now will the amendment passes on a roll call vote with eight in favor, one absent. All right, now back to the main motion with the amendment. Any other discussion? Council Gilman?
I just want to mention something fun that we that we discussed at our meeting before we take the vote. We thought because. The Magnolia Library is a five oh one C three and we understand that it's going to cost them money out of their proceeds to hire a police detail. It would be really fun if city counselors would be willing to. Have a picture taken with Council Nolan and his fancy antique car in that we all throw in twenty five dollars. Just to help to, you know, mitigate mitigate the the expense of a. Police officer. So I know I'm looking forward to that and counselors Holmgren and Pat. Said that they're in, so I just think that that would be really cool. So. Anyway, I hope that everyone decides that they want to join us for this.
Certainly, certainly will. I'll be joining that. Council Pat?
Yes, and I'm not sure that twenty five dollars would be enough to cover the detail. Thinking about it, so I wanted to add that in reality, it should be twenty five for getting the honor to sit in. Council Nolan's vehicle, but we should add another twenty five dollars if he secretly, when you do that. Tell someone what the secret handshake is. So come to fifty dollars apiece.
All right. But I'm I'm fine with that. I don't, I don't have a problem. Anything to help out the Magnolia Library. I donate blood there regularly. I know Council O'Hara has a lot of ties, Council Nolan. I I don't think, none of us don't have ties to the Magnolia Library. So I don't have a problem with that, but we'll deal with that with Council Gilman or or Sean or whoever wants to, or probably Jamie. Be the best go to, Sean and Jamie be the best go to people to make a donation to the, and not only the counselors, but if anybody else would like to. Donate to this good cause, we should put that out there and. Whatever doesn't. Apply to the detail, we'll put it back into the library's fund. All right, sounds good. So back to the main motion with the amendment, no other discussion. We will take a roll call vote. Oh, we already did, right? We voted? All right, I'm I'm lost here. All right, Council Memart?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Absolutely, yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes, can't wait.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
And that's it. Motion passes on a roll call vote with eight in favor, one absent. All right, I got a little bit ahead of myself there with the amendments and the motions and the discussion and everything else, but we're back on track.
You just want to sit in my car.
Yeah, I know. I do. All right, so let's see. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty one dash zero two seven loan order twenty twenty one. Zero zero three loan authorization requesting an amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars for the purchase of a new Harbor Master Petrobo.
All right, so I will open the public hearing and continue this to November ninth, twenty twenty one. For that city council meeting, if anybody would like to go back and look at the. Minutes for the budget and finance last week, you can understand why we're continuing this. There's a few questions. We'd like to answer before we bump this back up to the city council level. And Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Council request to the mayor.
All right, so under Council request to the mayor, any council requests usually come from us or a constituent. Request. You know, I I. We we haven't got a request response in a little bit, so hopefully we'll get. A request soon and. You know, it's 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 difficult when we're requesting things and we're not getting anything back from our side or from. Not from our side, but not getting anything back to report back. So, but we're going to go through, forward with the council's requests to the mayor and. I'll start it off with Councilor McCarthy.
Yes, just following up on what you just said, Mr. President. My request to the mayor this week is that we. Receive answers to our past request to the mayor. There's several of them that I've made that are still out there. Myself, Scott and Melissa had twice requested things. All of you joined me last week, two weeks ago in requesting that we. Go hybrid for our committees and commissions. I haven't heard anything on that. So I guess. So I guess my request is that we we get answers to our requests. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Memmar?
Yes, thank you. I have, I do have one request to the mayor and I'm just putting this out there to be on the schedule planning forward. We did pass a number of emergency neighborhood beach parking restrictions for non-residents last spring, and that was an effective tool to controlling unwanted parking traffic for the beaches in our local neighborhoods. I've had one request from the residents of the Farrington Avenue neighborhood for a change, and I'm going to put that out as a request to the mayor at this time and look forward to reviewing it with the with the council and relevant committees and the traffic commission, but residents in that neighborhood would request that it be resident sticker parking only from Niles Beach to St. Louis Avenue on the southerly side and with no parking, no parking. Currently, it's allowed for anyone, resident or non-resident, on the westerly side of the remaining area of Farrington Avenue, and this request is made for clear safety reasons due to the lack of sidewalks and the dangerous, the dangerous speed of traffic on Farrington. And there's a strong preference by all the butters to put this into effect over, you know, they've reviewed it over time and they appreciate our consideration. There's also a sense that they want to really maintain the limited size of the public portion of Niles Beach or and avoid overflow into the private areas and keep the spirit of Niles Beach as a local largely community quote unquote, mother's beach as it has been for many years. So that was the request of the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Maybe maybe you'd be best suited putting a council order referring this out to the traffic commission too for the parking.
Situation. I would, thank you, Steve, I'll do that.
All right. Counselor Nolan?
I have no request at this time. I'd just like to thank the Gloucester Police Department who was stepping up with the speed enforcements in my ward. I know it's a constant issue all around the city, but it's nice seeing the signs go up and the officers communicate with people, not just give tickets and understanding of what speed can do. And so I'd like to tonight, thank Gloucester PD.
Thank you, Sean. Counsel O'Hara?
I have no immediate request, just a point of information. The Magnolia Library is, as you mentioned, Steve, that dealing with blood drives, we have a blood drive coming up this coming Sunday, the October third from eight, eight AM to two thirty PM. Walk-ins are available, the blood drive is through Dana Farber Craft Family. And please feel free to visit my website to get information to make an appointment, but again, walk-ins are available. And that'll be also simultaneously be taking place with the farmers market. Thank you.
Awesome, Jamie, thank you. Counsel Pat?
Yes, just a sort of an informal request to the administration, and I see Chris on this evening. And since he's the tech guru there in the, in the mayor's office, I'm just wondering if we could somehow get on to the city website. A real clear education for the citizens about what the resident parking stickers, you know, what they mean. You know, et ceteras, like some people think you have a resident parking sticker on or a sign on your street that only residents of that street or whatever, and the same thing with the, you know, with the beach parking stickers and what you can do with one versus having the other or whatever. It just gets a little confusing trying to explain it to, you know, some of the constituents when they're asking the questions, so. I just asked Chris if that makes sense that we have a way of really clarifying that on the city website somehow.
All right, Barry, thank you. Counselor Holgrun?
A couple of things, yes. First of all, really looking forward to the Magnolia Farmers Market. Again, it's October tenth, Lexington Avenue, Magnolia from eleven to five. That's the last day of the Magnolia Farmers Market. There's one coming up this Sunday.
She's the only one froze. It looks like it, huh?
Poor Jen.
I think she's still talking.
I got you again, before before I disappear again.
But so we lost you at Farmers Market, the tenth on a Sunday, and then you went out.
Okay, so that's the last day of the Magnolia Farmers Market. I hate Zoom, guys. I I like it, but I hate. Okay. And the last day of the Cape Ann Farmers Market is October fourteenth, so be sure to get that in. And I recall at some point, wasn't there a shared Google Doc or something with all of the the requests to the mayor? Joanne, can you help me with that? I I have, okay, I have an aversion to Google Docs, so I don't check that very often, but is there a possibility of you sharing that?
I think Sherry sent it out to all of us a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah, we all, we all have it.
Okay.
It's a spreadsheet.
So, and as Chris, I want to clarify, is that shared between you and the city clerk's office?
Yes, and we work with the clerk's office to make sure that there's been some significant updates in the last few weeks here, so.
All right, so it would, it would definitely behoove me to get over my fear of Google Docs and take a look at it, and I think maybe the rest of us should take a look at it as well. Thank you.
All right.
I can, oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I can send it, I can just send it as an attachment or Sherry can send it as attachment updated.
Could you please, that would be so much easier, honestly, because it, a whole different app opens up and I am just so burned out on technology at this point. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, I hope that's not more inconvenient.
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Joanne. Counsel Gilman?
So I'm happy to say that I'm going to remove one of my requests to the mayor. The August twenty second one, which was requesting the Public Works Director provide a presentation on private road repairs. And having spoken briefly with Mike Hale this past week, we believe we should just hold off on that until after the new council is in place. So I I'm asking to remove that right now. It makes a lot of sense because that's what, that way people like Adam Orlando, who is on the call right now, who will be the Ward Three Counselor, starting on January first, he'll be able to attend and ask questions, as will all the new counselors. So I'm going to remove that. The only one that I would really, really like to mention right now that's really important is I request that my requests made on March seventh and April twenty ninth that through the mayor, that the traffic commission review the signage needs at the corner of Andrews Street and Langsford Street in light of two skidding accidents that occurred in January of two thousand and twenty one, where cars landed in the driveway of ten Andrews Street. And that's a really important one, particularly with the winter coming. We really need to take a look at that, and I remember that we now need to ask for referrals to the traffic commission through the mayor. And and I think the traffic commission would do a great job in looking at this. I've been looking at their agenda. They've been getting mostly handicap parking only, and it would be nice to give them something that requires a site visit and gets them doing some of the great work that we need them to. And then my only other thing that I wanted to mention to the counselors is that I have a pretty large betterment meeting scheduled for the October ninth for Apple Street, Juniper, Blueberry and Honeysuckle. It's going to be a Corliss landing at nine thirty. I encourage any at-large counselors who want to join, please come, and Adam Orlando said that he'd love to come and just learn from us, but it's going to I have it posted on my Ward Four page and we're doing flyers in letters out, and I've been working closely with Mike Hale and with Sean Nolan on this, so I'm excited about this, and I think I'm trying to get an outdoor event before the winter time rather than bring people indoors during COVID right now. So anyway, and the only other thing I'd like to say is happy birthday on Sunday, this past Sunday, to Counsel Nolan. Happy birthday, my friend.
Your old dog, you.
We used to have balloons and and cake.
Wasn't it your birthday now, too?
Oh, mine was like weeks ago, September twelfth, but.
Okay, all right.
No discussion of cake, please.
Thanks, so that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, and last but not least is myself. I don't have any requests to the mayor, but I have been talking with Adam almost weekly about filling some shoes of mine, and he's going to be an asset to the community. And he's a great person and he's going to do some amazing things, and I'm looking forward for him. My my first complaint to my ward counselor is going to be that my counselor Orlando, no. Looking forward to you stepping in, buddy, and I told him the other day, we had a good conversation, anything he needs from me, we can reach out. All right, so with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I believe that Counsel Blank, you'll never ever complain to a counselor.
Never, ever. I will point people in the right direction.
No move.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Call for the roll, Counsel Memmar?
Yes, good night.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes, good night, everybody.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm giving blood on the sixth at nine AM, just so you know, I couldn't make the third. Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holgrun?
Yes, thanks, everyone.
Counsel, Counsel LeBlanc? Yes, and Counsel McCarthy?
Yes, good night.
All right, good job, everyone. Have a great night. We'll see you.
Good night. Thanks, Joanne.